Ready, Sue?
Ready now.
Great, okay, thank you. Good morning, everybody, good morning. Welcome to the Appropriations and Human Services Public Hearing to hear the DDS waiver application. We are, we are going to be discussing this with Department of Social Services and the Department of Developmental Services. I want to welcome all my colleagues and thank you very much for coming today. And I believe we have a large group from each team, so I'm going to ask each Commissioner to introduce their teams so that we know who they are. Start with you, Commissioner Gifford, good morning.
Good morning, Representative Walker, thank you. I am joined, Deidre Gifford, Commissioner of DSS. I am joined by Bill Halsey, our Deputy Medicaid Director, David Seifel from our Legislative Liaison Office, Jennifer Cavallaro, who is one of our waiver program directors. And is there anyone else from DSS that I have missed? They're not showing on my screen.
I have Michael Slitt.
Yeah.
Good morning, Michael Slitt.
Morning, everybody, I'm here.
From our, one of our attorneys.
Thank you, thank you, ma'am. Good morning, Commissioner Sheff. I'm looking for you, I lost you on the screen.
I'm here.
Okay, there you are.
Still here.
It's like, it's like Hollywood Squares, really, because trying to find out where everybody is. Good morning, would you like to introduce your team, sir?
I'm going to do my best because I'm scrolling across the top to make sure who I introduce is actually here. Rod O'Connor in our Legislative Affairs and Regulations Office is with us today. Kevin Bronson, Legislative and Communications Director. Krista Ostrowski, our Waiver Director is on the call today. My COO, Katie Rockburns, is on the call today. And I don't, Nick Gerard from our Business Office, our CFO's office is here. And I don't know if anybody else is, if I have any other staff on the call that I missed, you can just shout out, but I think I got everybody.
Lisa Valerio, Deputy Commissioner.
There you are, hiding on someone else's screen, I found you.
We ran into a computer problem this morning, so we're sharing.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Great, good morning. Representative Abercrombie. You have your hand up?
I did, I did, good morning, everyone, thank you, Representative Walker, just for a brief announcement. I just want to take this opportunity to say congratulations to Kate McAvoy, who has now been named the Executive Director of the National Association of Medicaid Directors. I think that we should all be so proud of the fact that, you know, Kate has been in Connecticut and, you know, she started her career doing long-term care. I learned so much from her then, and then she became our Medicaid Director and has only improved our Medicaid here in Connecticut. And now she's going to be at the national level, so I just want all of us to say congratulations to Kate McAvoy. I know we all are very proud of her, so congratulations, Kate.
Absolutely, absolutely. You know, it's, it's, it's a, it's a true testament to Connecticut because we have so many people that start their careers in Connecticut and end up going nationally. I mean, look at education, I mean, I could list a group of them. So it says that we do our homework and, as I tell everybody, Connecticut researches everything until we can't do anymore. And that's, that's a true testament to what we do and how hard we work, so. Thank you and congratulations, Kate. I know we'll be seeing you, you'll be glad to come back home and talk to us about what great things you're doing nationally, so. Thank you, thank you, Representative Abercrombie. All right, so I will, at this point, turn it over to Commissioner Gifford and Commissioner Sheff, who will give us their introductions, thank you, ma'am, thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Representative, good morning to you, to Senator Austin, Senator Moore, Representative Abercrombie, and all the members of the Human Services and Appropriations Committee, nice to see you all virtually and to have the opportunity to discuss these waivers. I am going to defer to my colleague for the majority of the testimony this morning, but just by way of refresher, these are obviously Medicaid waivers. And so, as the single-state Medicaid agency, the Department of Social Services has ultimate responsibility for the claiming, the federal claiming for these waiver services and for the administration. But the day-to-day operations are managed by DDS, as in most states, there's a sister state agency relationship. And the Commissioner and I and our teams work very closely together on this and all of our shared programs. So there are three waivers before you this morning that are up for renewal. I'll just name them briefly and then I defer to Commissioner Sheff. The first is the Individual and Family Supports Waiver that provides residential and day supports to people who live in their own or family home. This waiver was last renewed in 2018, February. Serves 3,525 individuals currently, with the average annual claims per member of $25,000 roughly. The second waiver that's up for renewal is the Employment and Day Supports, waiver which provides employment and day supports to DDS-eligible individuals who require career development, supported employment, or community-based day supports, respite services, or behavioral supports to remain in their own or their family home. This waiver was last renewed in April of 2021. Currently serving 2,267 members and an average cost of $16,400 per year. And finally, the Comprehensive Supports Waiver, which provides direct services and supports for people who live in licensed settings, who live in their own or their family home, volunteer and work in their local communities that may require a level of support not available under the IFS waiver. This waiver was last renewed in October of 2018. Currently serves 5,066 members, an average claim per member of $160,400 per year. And with that, to walk you through the proposed changes, with your permission, Madam Chair, I will pass this over to Commissioner Sheff, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Gifford, and thank you to all of you who've joined the call. We appreciate your time and the opportunity to discuss these proposed changes with you today. As of the end of September, more than 10,800 individuals were active on one of the three DDS waivers. I'm going to speak briefly about changes that span across all three before moving into some specific waiver amendments that we're seeking, changes that we're seeking. So, across all three waivers, we are looking to add a virtual component to the individualized day support service to offer flexibility based on an individual's need. And this option, this virtual option will be an alternative to in-person support in limited circumstances. We're looking to increase the assistive technology limit from 15,000 to 25,000, the vehicle modification limit from 15,000 to 25,000, and the environmental modification limit from 25,000 to 35,000. As a, as a reminder, when we increase the limits, it doesn't, it doesn't increase our obligation financially, nor yours. It allows us, though, room within the waiver as things change to increase within our appropriation as needed to meet individuals' needs. And we can provide additional detail on the substance to that. We're also looking at adding language to the Individual Home Support Service and Individualized Day Support Service and the Adult Companion Service to allow for such services to be provided in short-term acute-care hospital stay for the purposes of supporting participants' personal behavioral and communication needs. Otherwise, not provided in that setting. Removing the Pre-vocational Support Service, we currently have no one enrolled in that particular service. It's an outdated model that we used as a transition period moving, trying to move the system towards more effective and better services for individuals. Also looking at adding a home delivery meal service to ensure food security for our participants who aren't otherwise able to obtain nourishing meals independently or when the individual responsible for that activity preparing meals is temporarily absent or unable to prepare the meals. And in incorporating some of the approved Appendix K temporary preparedness and response amendments into our HCBS waiver. In the original list of proposed changes, we had also suggested combining and incorporating the Independent Support Broker Service into the Individualized Goods and Services Service. After further review, we will not be moving forward with this change at this time. Specific to the IFS waiver and the comp waiver, the departments are proposing the following additional changes: combining and incorporating personal support services into the individualized home support services. They, the two separate services perform very similar functions at very similar costs and will simplify the system both for us and for participants. And finally, the departments are proposing the following waiver cap increases. Again, this doesn't obligate the Legislature nor the Governor to increase funding, but gives us room with increased costs associated with providing that service to continue to provide the same level of service to individuals over time. And I wanted to just make a quick note that our notice of intent for public review and comment on the waiver renewal received six comments, all largely in support of the proposed changes. And another apology, that a letter notifying the Committees of Cognizance about our intent to submit that certain attachments didn't go through the email system and arrived to you late, but we were unaware until we were noticed that the attachments had not gone through. And with that, both staff from DSS and DDS, as you're aware, are on the call and are happy to answer or try to answer any questions you may have. Thank you for your time this morning.
Thank you, sir, and thank you for your testimony. And thank you, Commissioner Gifford, for your testimony. I'm just going to start out with the one question on all three: the Individual Family Support, Employment and Day, and the Comprehensive. Do you have a waiting list for any of these programs right now currently?
We, so, we have waiting lists, is the answer, is the general answer to your question. There are people who are looking for supports who are not receiving them. The waitlist that we talk about most often is individuals looking for residential placement. And that may be out-of-home or in-home support services that are provided. But yes, we still maintain a waitlist across those waivers for residential supports in particular.
Do you have an idea of what the waitlists are?
I don't have a copy of the most recent management information report. I believe it's just north of 600 people currently in our emergency list or Priority One list. But I don't have that number in front of me and we can be sure to get that to Ms. Keen following the meeting today.
Thank you, and my last question. What is the age group that you cover with these waivers?
They're not age-limited. We do provide supports to children, but not all of these supports are provided to children. The waivers, as they're set up, are really the payment service of last resort. So for children, a number of people who would otherwise might be eligible for our services receive them through state plan amendments or through private insurance, through their schools. If their issues are more pronounced across their mental health, they may receive services through DCF. But we do fund children's services as well as adult services across the waivers.
Would, thank you, and would you please provide Ms. Keen with the, the age brackets that show, that you do for children's services so that we could have that information also?
Yes, we will.
Thank you very much. All right, Representative Hughes.
I'll defer to Representative Abercrombie first so that she can ask her question, and I might have the same question.
Okay, that's very nice of you. See what happens when you start to retire, you get all these, all these opportunities. Representative Abercrombie.
Thank you, thank you, Representative Hughes, I appreciate that. First of all, let me just say that I am really, really excited about the amendments to this waiver. I think increasing the caps is really good for the people that we support here. I like some of the, the new services that will be added. I just have two questions. What is the independent support broker? I'm not familiar with that term.
So first of all, thank you, and I appreciate that you appreciate the amendments. I think a lot of our conversations, Representative Abercrombie, over the years have been around wraparound supports, and I think you'll see or recognize that some of the intended modifications allow us to better wrap services like the food delivery or modifications to vehicles or homes, so that, I appreciate that. The support broker role, so as most of you are aware, we also, in addition to provider-based services, offer services that are self-determined or self-managed, where individuals and their families may hire staff directly using funding that we provide. The independent support broker role is, allows a person to use a portion of their authorization to pay somebody to help them manage their supports and services. So to, I'll try and explain that a little better, and I'm going to use arbitrary, you know, just arbitrary numbers for the sake of an example. If your authorization was $50,000 and that allowed you for 20 hours a year, 20 hours a week of service per year, you might, but hiring and maintaining your own staff is a challenge for you as an individual or you and your family. You might choose to use a portion of that money to hire a broker, who would, in a sense, help manage the staff that you would hire to administer the rest of those hours. It would come from that $50,000 authorization that we'd made. So it comes from within the, the level of need determination, you know, how much services you get. But it gives families an option to to use those funds to help manage the services instead of having to manage them all on their own. I hope that helps explain it a little.
It does. Is this individual registered anyplace or can it be anyone? So I'll give you an example, so if I have a, a child living with me, right, and I've been managing their care all through the years, and now they get these wraparound services, do I, can I be paid to manage the individuals that come into our home? Because you know that they're getting all different services within these dollars. Who is this person, I guess is what I'm asking?
So there are specific limits from Medicaid as to who can be hired to provide that service. And I believe currently, I want to make sure I get the, the correct language to you, and Krista may have it off the top of her head. There are limits as to roles that biological parents and legal guardians can play in how services are administered. Some of that, as you know, was relaxed during the public health emergency to allow other people who wouldn't traditionally have the opportunity to get paid to provide services to get paid. But I want to make sure I have the specific limits as specified, what, what is limited by CMS to you in writing, so I don't, I'm just working off the top of my head. Krista, is, did I get that right?
You did, Commissioner, thank you, yeah. At this time, legal guardians and parents of minor children are unable to be paid for providing supports. And that is articulated in the waiver. I think we've had some discussions with the Legislature prior about some opportunities, at looking at options during the public health emergency. Like you noted, Commissioner, there was some flexibility put into place that has since ended. And we've talked to some families about some options moving forward. But at this time, the waiver does not allow for legal guardians and parents of minor children to be paid for supports.
Thank you, thank you, Commissioner. Krista, if you could, when you get a chance, send Sue Keen, kind of like the definition of who can and who can't, and where it's listed in the CMS rules that we are governed by, who can be paid for this service? And I agree with you, I know we've tried to figure out how we can support families, right? Because we know parents are going with one person working because the other has to be home to support the, the individual, you know, in their home. So I agree with you there. So thank you for that. And then my second question is, and I'll be done. Number six on your bullets talks about removing the Pre-vocational Support Service. I'm drawing a blank, what was that service? And did we substitute that service by using another definition or another category?
So when CMS began to articulate the final settings rule and made it clear that sheltered workshop services directly were not going to be a long-term funded support by CMS, the department, and I'm going to guess, this is as long as 10 years ago, maybe a little less, eliminated Sheltered Workshop, what code we call SHE from billable code, and set up a time-limited service called Pre-vocational that allowed us to focus on trying to transition people from center-based Sheltered Workshop to community-integrated work settings. And over a period of time, we moved most of the people from sheltered to Pre-vocational and now have moved most people, we don't have anyone active in that service now. So that was the reason to eliminate it now, because we aren't paying for sheltered work specifically and no one exists in that sort of time-limited category. We still have other transition and time-limited services in the waiver that allow for people coming into the system for some flexibility while we help them reach their employment goals.
Thank you, thank you so much for that, I really do appreciate it. And again, good job to you, Commissioner Sheff, and you, Commissioner Gifford, for, for this waiver and the amendments on it, well done, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Representative, oh, I'm sorry, Representative Hughes, would you like to now go?
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Representative Abercrombie. Yeah, I'm really excited about these waivers. I just would like for my colleagues to understand the caps that you're talking about, is that lifetime or annual? That, is this?
Annual.
Okay, so it's annual, excellent. And secondly, I, I am so excited about the acute-care hospital stay, you know, the personal companion. Having been one of those staff that was, you know, sent to the hospital to be with my clients from either supported living apartments or group homes, it is catastrophic to send them to the hospital without their support person. They cannot communicate, they feel trapped, they're often over-medicated. The, the providers can't understand what's wrong with their, you know, with their patient. And that is, that is absolutely critical to, to, to our clients' well-being and, and healing. And also the home delivery meal service, that is really important because suddenly a client is used to something and then that person is not providing or is sick or can't come in. They, they can't just suddenly, you know, make their meal for themselves. My question is, who brokers that part? Is that the case manager, is that the provider, their staff provider, who brokers that part?
I'm going to defer to Krista, if I may, to respond to that.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner, thank you, Representative Hughes. I just want to make sure I understand your question so we're, I'm able to respond appropriately. So you're asking about who sort of organizes the ability for an individual to receive supports in the temporary, in a temporary hospital setting? Commissioner, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, Representative Hughes, I thought you were more specifically talking about the food service.
Either, either one, yes. But yes, especially the food service, if, if their staff doesn't show up or whatever, yes.
Yeah, so, so specific for the, the meal delivery service. So there would be an opportunity for the case manager and the individual to decide and put together a plan to receive the meal delivery service. The waiver does require that a prior approval is approved. So essentially, the, there needs to be a need there, right? So the individual needs to have a need to have the meal delivery service. So either they're unable to prepare the food themselves, they don't have a support staff to do that appropriately, maybe they need a special diet or dietary needs that are unable to be met in the home or in the, in the home. So all of that essentially would be planned out in advance. And then the meal delivery, the, the timing in which the meals would be delivered and how often would be decided in advance. I am, I think your question is more around what would happen if a person is left in an emergency situation without food. I think we do have to look into that a little bit, and I think it's going to have to be determined based on the flexibility of the providers that are able to provide the supports. This is a new service for us, so we do not have providers currently qualified to provide the supports. I will tell you, we know of a few providers that have already showed a lot of interest in providing the supports because they know the need is out there. So I'm unable to give a specific response related to the emergency piece, but I will say that based on the provider response, I think we're going to have a lot of providers that are going to be flexible because they really do have, they really do know there's a need out there and they're going to want to be as responsive as possible. I'm happy to continue to provide updates. If this service does move forward and we can roll it out, we'd be happy to provide updates on how it's going.
Great, thank you so much, thank you.
Of course, thank you, Representative.
And Representative Hughes, to your first point about the hospital, you made my job today a little easier, given your personal testimony about its importance. I, I wanted folks to know on the call, though, that we have, over our history, authorized a limited use of state funding only for those situations when we know that they happen. This, this allows us to capture federal reimbursement for this and, and allow an increased number of opportunities to provide funded onsite support in those acute settings. Very often, without staff, the person's prognosis is, is worsened by not having support staff familiar with their communication, behavioral, and all of their other needs. And so this will do a couple of things, we believe, including potentially shortening hospital stays for individuals we support, which helps the hospital system and it helps the individual and it helps the agency. So we're really excited that the Medicaid Center for Medicaid Services is, is willing to consider such an amendment at this time.
Yeah, I'm really excited for us. Thank you, thank you, ma'am, thank you, sir. Next, Representative Case.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I just have, following up on, I believe, Rep. Abercrombie, when she was speaking, is, you know, we talk about services at home, and I know Krista was in on some conversations, a new commissioner, and like some conversations during the health emergency, you know, families got used to having family taking care of their loved ones at home. And there's still some scarcity out there of them having to hire somebody outside the family and bring them into the home because their loved one isn't able to be, or is vulnerable if they bring something into the house. So this, these waivers have nothing to do with that as far as carrying over from what the federal government allowed during the health emergency, is that correct? And are we working towards possibly in the future? Because there are still some families that are taking care of their own.
So there's nothing specific in these amendments regarding increased flexibility for who can be paid. There are other things that happened during Appendix K that are, during the health emergency, that are reflected in these. But we are following closely some states who are pursuing interest in paid caregiver models. CMS has had taken a longtime, hard position that there'd be no flexibility there. And with as many other things as we were looking to consider in the amendment and that we'd like to have in place for as soon as February, we did not, at this time, submit language around that, but we are watching closely other states who have and were CMS to allow flexibility for such a type of payment in other states. We would look very closely at that and consider how we would amend or change our waivers to allow for such following conversation with DSS, the administration. And, and we've heard loudly from a lot of Legislatures about, legislators about the issue. But were there any of those other states to have some success at getting latitude? We would, we would strongly consider pursuing a similar approach.
I appreciate it because there are so many that we have that are still at home and their family hasn't decided to have one family in the day home and take care of them instead of go to the day program or do other things as such, just because of their vulnerability of, of getting sick. So I thank you for that, I thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Representative Case.
Thank you, sir, thank you, Commissioner. Next, Representative Noah, good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chair, good morning, everybody. Commissioner, if I can just rewind to when you first started, you talked about the individual waivers. You first spoke on the Individual Family Supports Waiver, and that was last renewed in 2018. What was the approximate amount of people that were in that?
I don't have that number off the top of my head, do you want, and I, and let me just clarify the question because we will provide it. Did you want to know how many were enrolled in 2018 versus now? Or do you want to know how many people are enrolled in that waiver currently?
I actually was hoping to get the dates for each of them, the last time they were renewed.
We can, we can provide that information for you, I just don't have it available to me at the moment.
Yeah, I think the Commissioner said it at the beginning, Commissioner Gifford.
Yeah, I was, those were current numbers, Representative. So in the Individual Family Supports, there are 3,525 individuals enrolled. But that's the current number. But that's the current number as of September twenty-third.
Okay, and the average cost. For that was.
Twenty-five thousand six hundred and twenty-five dollars.
Okay. All right. I think the. The comprehensive support waiver was renewed in October twenty eighteen, you said?
Correct.
Okay, and the employment day shift waiver, when was that last renewed? I'm sorry.
So this is Krista from DDS. Good morning, Representative Nolan. I, I can pull up all of the dates of when the waivers were last renewed. And also provide you with updated enrollment figures. I believe OFA may also have. Some of those details, but I'm happy to put it in a comprehensive package and send that to Susan right after the meeting. I, I'm attempting to pull it up right now. If I can do that quickly, I'd be happy to provide it in this meeting, but I can also provide it in writing afterwards as well.
Oh, that would be great. I appreciate it. Is that all my questions? Chair, can I ask one more?
I was muted. Sorry, yes, go right ahead.
And we talked about.
Representative, just to let you know, OFA submitted to us. Their analysis of it, and it's got all the, the current numbers and data in it. If you look in your, your email, there was, it was sent, I believe, yesterday.
And we talked about the waiting list in regards to some of the waivers. Do we project? When, how, how long would it take us to get through the waiting list? I know it's been a, a while since there's been. Well, it hasn't been a while, but do we project a, a time period where we'll be able to get through that? Or is that depending on what we approve in legislation?
So I think both may be true. We're, we're currently engaged in trying to do some systems transformation. That may reduce per person costs by, for a number of individuals currently in the system. Which in theory creates some liquidity within our current appropriation to try and help take some of those people off the waiting list. But. Without additional funding, we would not, we, we do not envision eliminating that within our current appropriation.
Okay. All right, I think I will stop there if I get the eye.
No, 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 no. If you have another question, sir, go ahead.
I would be interested in knowing what the needed funds would be to. Bring it down to a zero balance, I think.
Okay, next. They'll get right back to you on that one.
That's what I thought.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Senator Moore, good morning. Go ahead.
Good morning. Nice try, Reverend Nolan. So, you know, so the proposed changes are over five years, right? All of those. And so my, I'm wondering. And when an individual doesn't max out on their amount of money, what happens?
So I want to, I'm going to use this as an opportunity to clarify again, while we've raised the limits and the caps within the waivers. This is not a proposal to reva, to, to across the board increase funding for each individual currently enrolled. We do look at, so in, in terms of. This doesn't, this doesn't change their current annualized funding in any way. What we do, we do however, look at utilization. So there are, we make authorization based on projected need. And individuals do not always use every dollar authorized for them. We. We work very hard to make sure that when they're under utilizing that money, that that money is repurposed for. Other individuals who have needs, so that, which is why even when people don't use every dollar they have, we still. We, we tend not to lapse money in those accounts because we're able to address other people's needs beyond that. But depending on the waiver and the type of service, our, our utilization varies on an individual basis. As to how much of their resources used, but if we don't use it in the appropriated year, it doesn't carry forward.
I would guess that it doesn't make an opportunity, create an opportunity to pull people off of the waiting list.
Not very cleanly, but we do have opportunities that we, we, we do take people off the waitlist every year. Either as people leave the system or they, we create additional resources by people relying on less. Authorization frees up dollars for other people, but we do that mostly for emergencies that come to us. And, and that's how we would utilize that. And I can get deeper into detail on that, but it starts to get a little muddy. But we, 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 we know the average utilization on each type of service across the entire population. And over authorize knowing that it'll be underutilized so we can meet the needs of as many as we can.
All right, thank you. And then I just had one question about, so for the. Assisted technology increase from fifteen to twenty-five, so a ten thousand dollar increase over five years, is that?
No, that, that would be, no, I, it, it would be an increase of ten thousand dollars per year over those five years. So it, it's just a, a cap on what we can spend. Towards technology on an individual. But it's not a, it's, so the total annualized cap goes from fifteen to twenty-five.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Senator Moore.
Thank you. Thank you, Senator Moore. Senator Austin.
Um, thank you very much, Commissioners, both of you. It's nice seeing you. I just have a question on the wait, the waitlist that you're going to send the information over on. And I don't, I don't really need an answer right now. Could you, do you have demographic? From data for each one of the waitlist age of the person on the waitlist? Sex. Or gender and race or ethnicity? Is that possible for us to get that type of detail?
I can tell you that age and gender is probably much easier to get than races as our system. Has evolved, wasn't a required question. And so over our history, so we have blank fields. For some of that data that, so it wouldn't, I, to my knowledge as of today, we have blank fields in some of that data. So it wouldn't be on a, for every single person. We'd have race information, but I believe we are increasing. The amount of that data we have, and I haven't looked to see how much we've closed the gap on that. But it would be something we can follow up with you on and give a better answer after we take a look.
That would be great. Thank you. Thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Are there any more questions from anybody from human services or appropriations? Are there any more questions for? From anybody? Senator Chikarala, good morning. Good morning.
Thank you. Just a quick question. You, you said that there is. A way to repurpose some of the funds not used. How is that done? Is there, is it an automated system? How exactly is that done?
There is not an automated system. There's a couple, so our business office and our operations center monitors utilization throughout the year. In each of the three. Each of the three regions, there is a, what we call a Pratt team, a planning and resource allocation team. That's kept aware of available funds and is, and receives the requests for funding from case managers and families. So it's that, that's how we. Use any underutilized funds repurposed for other people in the system. It's more of an art than a science, though.
Got it. And does, do expenses need to be approved? By a case manager or the case manager is the one requesting funds for, for a service needed?
The case managers represent the individual in their request for funds, and this planning and resource allocation team. Has the, the unforgiving job of needing to decide when they can say no and when they can say yes. And they do so with a great deal of consistency across the three regions. But the case manager makes the request, the funding decision is made by other individuals.
Got it. And out of curiosity, about how many individuals work in that capacity? Sounds like a tough job.
So each region has a Pratt manager. The team that makes the Pratt manager themselves doesn't make that decision on their own. They sit with other senior managers representing our self determination division, our. In-home family supports division and our private administration division, often a member from public, the resource administrator and some of our resource managers. Sit on that team as well. They meet every Tuesday for hours at a time processing all of these requests.
Excellent. Thank you for answering that. You know, obviously, everything's getting more expensive, so it makes sense that, that these services are, are getting more expensive. And we need, need to make sure the resources are there for the individuals that need said services. You know, I, I. I have a question. I don't know if this is the right place, but maybe you could answer the question or direct me to, to a, a resource. If this isn't the right place. In my district, I have a few children, maybe say, under ten with autism, severe cases of autism. And they get great services within the school, but when they get home, there's not resources for them. Would those families be able to get some of these services and waivers?
Potentially, yes. So autism. There are two, there are two primary means by which people with autism may get services or two different. Let me rephrase. When someone comes through our system to be determined eligible for services, sometimes they. Are, are qualified based on their developmental disability and intellectual disability. Sometimes they're qualified based on being found on the autism spectrum. Disorder diagnoses, and sometimes those overlap. DSS and DDS, DSS operates our autism waiver in the state of Connecticut, and there are state plan services for children. Through EPSDT, through a, a regular insurance as well. Each of those children, depending on their diagnosis and that potential for overlap, may receive services either from DSS or DDS. Sometimes in combination and sometimes through private insurance and private vendors. So. For people who are autistic only, without any signs, any diagnosis of intellectual disability, DSS is, it takes lead through their autism unit.
Excellent. Thank you for, for answering that question. And just one more on that. If, if, if a family had insurance, maybe not the greatest insurance, but they have insurance, would they still qualify for some assistance if the insurance? You know, co-pays are just outrageous?
So the DDS, I, I, I'm not sure how to respond to that. They, the, the qualification for services within DDS is not means tested in any way. So you, you know, we don't look for financials or, or, or you don't have to be impoverished in order to receive state assistance for those services. Where the state should ideally be the payer of last resort. So where private insurance can pay. The waiver requires us to exhaust that first, and then if that's exhausted or otherwise not achievable. The state is the, the, the backstop. Very often in those cases.
Excellent. Thank you so much for answering my questions.
Thank you, Senator Chikarala.
Thank, thank you. Commissioner, I just want to go back to what you just said to Commissioner, to Senator Chikarala. Chikarala, you said the DDS is not means tested. What does that mean?
We don't do financial testing. Like, there, there, you don't have to. You don't have to demonstrate your income and assets to us as a family when you come applying for services. It's based the eligibility for services and the determination as to what your needs are and how they're funded, aren't related to your financial income.
That's, that's different than many of the other supports that the state provides. Commissioner Gifford, is that true? Do we, most of our other services are all means tested, aren't they?
Yeah, well, I, yes, Representative, obviously for regular Husky. And for state plan, all the state plan services. You need to meet the Husky income eligibility. For some services, they are based, the, the eligibility might be based on the income. Of the person receiving the services. I, I believe that's, that is how Katie Beckett eligibility is determined, but I could be wrong about that. So I think the short answer is that it varies depending on the services and. The type of program that we're talking about. But in general, yes, there are. Income eligibility requirements to receive Medicaid funded services.
And, and food stamps, rent assistance, any, any assistance. That I know of besides DDS is, is means tested, which is very interesting.
Definitely snap, yes.
Yeah, yeah, so, but, but that's, that's interesting. I'm, I'm very curious about that. Are there any more questions from the, both, both the committees? Well, if not. Mad Administrator, you pop up right away. At this point, I'd like to conclude the public hearing of human services and appropriations on the DDS. Waivers, the three waivers that we heard today were. Got too many papers. The renewal of the Medicaid for Individual and Family Supports Amendment. For the Medicaid waiver for employment and day services and the amendment for Medicaid waiver for comprehensive services. I conclude that we close our hearing. Thank you. At this point, we are going to go to our committee hearings. And have, take out, take a vote for the waivers that we have. Madam Administrator, do you want me to give you a minute to shift into that or can we go right in?
I'm one step ahead of you, ma'am. I'm ready to shift.
Ready to rock and roll. I, you're always ready. We doubt, we doubt you. I never should doubt you. So thank you, Commissioners. Thank you for your testimony. And thank you, your team, for being available for us to ask our questions because we learn every day when we have our public hearings. Thank you. All right, so I will turn this over to Appropriations Committee.
Services, ma'am?
Yes, human services. I'm sorry, human services. Senator Moore or Representative Moore?
Yes, thank you, Representative Walker. I'll chair the meeting. The, as the Chair of Human Services, I'll now convene the meeting. And I'm asking for a motion and a second to approve the following. The renewal of the Medicaid waiver for individual and family support. The amendment of the Medicaid waiver for employment and day support. And the amendment of the Medicaid waiver for comprehensive support. Move and second it. Are there any questions, any discussions? Saying none, Mad Administrator, would you take the role for me? Thank you.
Representative Abercrombie.
Abercrombie votes yes.
Senator Moore.
Moore votes yes.
One more time.
Moore votes yes.
Ah, great. Thank you.
Senator Burtel. Representative Case.
Representative Case votes yes.
Senator Lesser.
Senator Lesser votes yes.
One more time for me?
Lesser votes.
Thank you. Representative Leaper.
Representative Leaper votes yes.
Senator Cabrera. Representative Butler. If I may, please, I'm going to ask members to please mute. Because I'm getting some feedback. Thank you. Representative Butler. Representative Cook.
Representative Cook votes yes.
Representative Dayton.
Representative Dayton votes yes.
Representative Garabey.
Garabey votes yes.
Representative Gupiel.
Representative Gupiel votes yes.
Representative Hughes.
Representative Hughes votes yes.
Representative Santiago.
Santiago votes yes, and I'm not driving.
Representative Stallworth. Representative Aurora. Representative Buckby. Representative Mastro Francesco. Representative Scott.
Good morning. Representative Scott votes yes.
Thank you. Good morning. Thank you. Good morning. Representative Wood.
Representative Wood votes yes.
Nice to see you, Representative Wood.
Ditto.
Madam Administrator?
Uh, Representative Sims Appropriations hasn't voted yet. I'm, uh, pulling double duty. I'm pulling double duty today.
Okay, thank you so much.
You're welcome. Are there any members of the Human Services Committee who have not yet cast their vote?
Then Madam, Madam Administrator, I'd ask you to call the tally, please.
Certainly. Total number voting thirteen, those voting a thirteen, those voting a zero, those abstaining zero, those absent not voting seven.
Thank you, Madam Administrator. Next, uh, I'll recess the Human Service portion of this meeting. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam. Um, I'd like to call the Appropriations, convene the Appropriations Committee, uh, Appropriations Committee. Boy, I'm having a hard time this morning. It's contagious. I asked for motion and a second to approve the renewal of the Medicaid waiver for individual and family support. Amendment for the Medicaid waiver for employment support and amendment for Medicaid waiver and comprehensive support.
So move Representative Dayton?
Move by Representative Dayton, seconded.
Seconded by Senator Austin.
So, seconded by Representative Nolan. Uh, um, is, are there any questions or any discussions?
We have, we have one handle.
Ah, we have two. We have one. Okay. Representative, Representative, uh, wait, that says Representative France.
Yes, that's, that's, that's why I, I had problems getting in and Representative France had to send me a, a link. So if Madam Administrator would please change my name on this, I would very much appreciate it.
So I'm gonna ask Madam Clerk if you would please change Representative France to Representative Zawistowski.
You got it. Thank you.
That was interesting. Uh, Senator Flexer?
Thank you, uh, Madam Chair. I believe a few members are having trouble logging in this morning. I don't know if that affected members of the other committee, but it's affecting members of Appropriations.
Okay. Um, well, what we'll do is we will go through, through the roll call. Um, and if people are having a difficulty, please, uh, communicate it to, uh, either, um, um, Susan Keane or Taylor Hyde, so that we know that, uh, or you can call me or Senator Austin, any of them, so that we can make note of your difficulty that you're having right now. Okay?
That's right. The best we could do, um, would be to have notations in the minutes that the, um, legislator was experiencing technical difficulties and would have voted either in the affirmative or would have voted against. So if members of both Human Services and Appropriations are listening, or their legislative aides are listening, Taylor, please send the email to Taylor and Taylor Hyde and to me. And please indicate that they had technical difficulties and how they would have cast their vote had they been able to log in. So, thank you, Senator Flexer, for letting us know that.
Thank you. Uh, seeing no, no more discussion, Madam Administrator, please call the roll.
Senator Austin. Senator Austin votes in the affirmative. Representative Walker.
Representative Walker votes in the affirmative.
Oh, something is happening. Again, please.
Okay. Representative Walker is voting in the affirmative.
Thank you. There is definitely some delay going on here.
I gotta vote.
Senator Hartley.
Senator Hartley in the affirmative.
Gotcha.
Thank you.
Representative Dayton.
Representative Dayton votes in the affirmative.
Representative Nolan.
Representative Nolan votes in the affirmative, but I am not driving.
Senator Minor.
Senator Minor votes in the affirmative, and I'm not driving either.
Um, so is the real Representative France here?
Representative France votes yes.
Nice to see you, sir. Representative Abercrombie.
Representative Abercrombie votes yes.
Senator Doherty Abrams. Senator Anwar.
Senator Anwar votes yes.
Representative Baker. Representative Betts.
Representative Betts votes yes.
Representative Belinski.
Representative Belinski votes in the affirmative.
Representative Candelaria. Senator Chicarella.
Senator Chicarella votes yes. And I'm also texting with Senator Burtell, um, and, and he said he was going to also vote yes. I don't know if that was appropriate time to say that, but just wanted to get that out there. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Representative Curry. Representative Curry. I'll come back to you. Representative Delaney.
Representative Delaney in the affirmative.
Representative Dylan.
You're muted. Representative Dylan votes yes.
I need you to try one more time, transmission.
I shouldn't be.
Oh.
One more time?
Yes, please.
Yep. Representative Dylan votes yes.
Um, Representative Dylan, could you try going out and coming back in, maybe?
No, if I may, if I may, Madam Chair, Representative Dylan, are, do you have YouTube Live on your computer? If you have YouTube, if you're running YouTube Live, close it and then try voting again.
Yes.
Okay, try one more time. Try one more time. There you go. Okay, try one more time now.
Representative Dylan votes yes.
Yay, gotcha. Thank you. Okay, Representative Felipe.
Representative Felipe votes in the affirmative.
Representative Ferraro.
Representative Ferraro votes yes.
Senator Flexer.
Senator Flexer votes yes.
Representative Gibson.
Representative Gibson votes yes. Good morning.
Good morning. Representative Gilchrist.
Representative Gilchrist votes yes.
Representative Gonzalez.
Representative Gonzalez vote yes.
Representative Hadad.
Representative Hadad votes yes.
Representative Carol Hall. Representative Joshua Hall. Representative Harrison.
Representative Harrison votes yes.
Representative Hayes. Representative Howard.
Representative Howard votes yes.
Representative Johnson.
Representative Johnson votes yes.
Representative Kennedy. Kennedy votes yes. Good. Senator, good morning. Senator Kushner.
Senator Kushner votes yes.
Senator Lesser.
Senator Lesser votes yes.
Senator Lopes.
Senator Lopes votes yes.
Representative Luxembourg.
Luxembourg votes yes.
Representative McCarty.
Representative McCarty votes yes.
Senator McCrory. Representative Perez.
Representative Perez votes yes.
Representative Pavlov Tomato.
Pavlov Tomato votes yes.
Representative Porter. Representative Porter votes in the affirmative. Representative Reyes.
So Representative Reyes votes in the affirmative.
Representative Rosario.
Representative Rosario on the affirmative.
Representative Brian. Representative Sanchez. Representative Sims.
Representative Sims votes in the affirmative.
Senator Summers.
Morning. Senator Summers votes yes.
Good morning. Representative Tursiak. Representative Wilson.
Representative Wilson votes yes.
Senator Winfield.
Good morning. Senator Winfield in the affirmative.
Good morning. Representative Zawistowski, AKA Mike France.
Representative Zawistowski, formerly Mike France.
Is there any member of the Appropriations Committee who has not yet cast their vote?
Yes, Representative Candelaria. Yes, yes.
Morning, sir.
Good morning.
Anyone else? Nope, I think that's it.
Uh, did you get Representative Curry? I'm sorry.
Nope.
Uh, Representative Curry votes yes. Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Ready?
Ready.
Okay. Madam Administrator, could you announce the tally?
Total number voting forty-two, those winning a forty-two, those voting a zero, those abstaining zero, those absent not voting nine.
Wonderful. The renewal and amendments all pass. May I have a motion to adjourn? Second. Uh, it's moved by Candelaria and seconded by Porter. And, uh, Madam Administrator, Appropriations meeting is adjourned. Everybody have a great day.
Thank you.
Human Services?
Thank you, Representative Walker. Uh, as the Chair, I'll convene the meeting and ask for a motion and a second to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Moved and seconded. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Bye, everyone. Have a great day.
Bye.
Thank you.